Seven o'clock, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have a couple announcements tonight. The Select Board members Anne Marie Foley and Matt Auton will be holding an Ask Me Anything in Community Room A of the Grafton Public Library this Thursday, February 16th at 7:00 PM. This is an opportunity for the community to come out and ask them anything. The Recreation Department has a variety of adult fitness classes and afternoon sports program for kindergarteners and first graders beginning in March. There are also a number of April vacation programs from ages six to 14. Register today at graftonrec.com. There are no public hearings and we have some appointments tonight. First up is Andy Shelberg. Do you want to have a seat, Mr. Shelberg? You can just stay there, too. How are you?
I am well. How are you doing?
Lovely. So it looks like you'd like to be appointed to a couple committees. I thought I'd let you tell us a little bit about yourself.
Okay, first of all, I'm a resident of town for, since 1978. I don't know how many years. It's a bunch. I like to get involved with stuff. I was involved with the Soldiers and Sailors Memorials Trust for three or four years and actually got up to the level of president. But being president also had another title. I had secretary as well. You know, all the things I did with veterans and all the stuff I've been doing with all the cemeteries and locating all the veterans. That was taking a lot of my time. I couldn't put the time that I wanted on these soldiers and sailors, so I asked respectfully to be taken off the board for a short period. I'd like to go back on. I left some things that I wanted to get done and still have not gotten done. One is the second plaque for the Vietnam veterans did not get on the first plaque. I believe there's 148 of them, so it's not a cheap undertaking. It'll be a plaque for the Memorial Hall. Should be created and mounted right next to the other one. So all of our Vietnam veterans will be so honored. Okay, that's the first one. The other one, Mr. Gallagher, Jim Gallagher, asked me to join his Veterans Advisory Committee. Now, there are a lot of veterans. Mr. DeTomer, I believe, is the only non-veteran, but that's okay. They're looking for about 15 people. The more the merrier. There's a lot of things to do in this town and I'm bringing organizational skills. I'm bringing possible fundraising skills. Whatever's needed. So I just enjoy getting involved. I'm all done with the Boy Scouts. All five cemeteries are done. I'm doing a little cleanup before I give you guys the completed file. Should be about 1,900, which is almost 1,000 more than I started with in 2009.
Wow, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, does the board have any questions or comments for Mr. Shelberg?
Just so we're fortunate that he keeps stepping up for so many different events and projects.
Well, like I say, if you get into a town and be a mole, you don't get to know anybody. Brad can attest, I love people. Not everybody likes me, but oh, well, that's life, okay?
It's like all of us, Andy.
Yep, absolutely.
Sometimes you come with baggage. I hope I don't. I don't want to detract from anything that they've already done. But I feel like I can be a welcome addition to their board as well.
Excellent. Well, thank you so much. And if that's everything, I can take a motion.
So, question before I place a motion. We can move to place him on Veterans Advisory, but is it in our purview to appoint him to trustees of soldiers and sailors as well?
Yes.
Okay. Per the charter?
Yes. Yep, that was the, we straightened out that confusion because the general law says it's elected.
Right.
Our Home Rule Charter was adopted by the legislature and therefore supersedes that one section.
Is Mr. Versailles, is that a state dictated board?
The state does dictate that you have it. The state also dictates that it's elected. And Grafton's charter says that it's appointed, so I had to get an opinion on whether or not, who rules the roost, so to speak. And in this case, it's us.
Are there still members of that board or am I recreating a wheel from the start?
There are. We are currently speaking with a couple of them that might not remain on. Mr. Joma is...
Mr. Cutler, I spoke to the other night. He says he has the council aging now and he's right up to here with it. So he's not gonna be able to help us out.
Okay. We're working through some of that, but at any rate, yes, you can appoint.
Okay. I move the board vote to appoint Andy Shelberg to the Veterans Advisory Committee and to the trustees of soldiers and sailors memorials.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? I. Opposed. Declare the motion carried. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And thank you so much.
I will look forward to submitting an agenda and getting this stuff going again.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next is an election worker, Patricia Cahill. I can take any motion.
I move the board vote to appoint Patricia Cahill as an election worker for the town of Grafton.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? I. Opposed. Declare the motion carried. And then we have some TA and Fire Chief appointments. First up is Recreation Commission.
Sure. I move the board vote to affirm the appointment of Adrian Goldberg-Mompeh to the Recreation Commission.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? I. Opposed. Declare the motion carried. Next is Auxiliary Firefighter for Station 3.
I move the board vote to affirm the appointment of Ryan Nguyen-Cast McBride to the position of Auxiliary Firefighter of Station 3.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? I. Opposed. Declare the motion carried. Congratulations and welcome to Grafton. All right, so up first for new business is the Fourth of July Parade, which Mr. Jatoma is here to discuss. I think we have one graphic from the packet we might be able to throw up. Maybe I could see that better put on the screen.
Yep. Hi, everybody. Stoney was called away at the last minute for business, so I'm flying solo tonight. Yes, we would like to do another Fourth of July Parade. Just to give you some idea of where we are right now, we have contacted the chief and the fire chief and the police chief. So they are both aware and have approved our plan. We are going to do a lot of the same things we did last year. We're gonna have a 10:00 AM start. And we are currently looking for volunteers and hopefully we can get a lot of the same people back that we had last year. And two requests that came up from the feedback that we received last year was that there was no food. So we've already reached out to Anzios, who's gonna provide pizza. And we're currently efforting to get a local ice cream truck vendor out there, too. So it's a pretty short list of things to talk about. I see why Stoney left it to me. We are in need of a banner and we would like to do some advertising to see if we could kinda beef up the parade a little bit. So that's where I'm here to say, help.
Show me the money.
Yeah. Not a lot of money. A banner and advertising, I can't imagine. It's big bucks, but...
I bet we could put something on GCTV, right? So when there's not...
Yeah, I'll get Stoney down to the studio. We'll do a PSA, but it only goes so far, so...
Of course.
Questions?
Very excited. So as far as food trucks go, they need a permit or how can we help with that?
Yeah, but we can help them navigate that process.
Yeah, okay. Make sure that gets done.
I think they're both pretty well versed in how to go about it, but we can coordinate, make sure that they're aware and that they do it and get it from there, so...
Bob, aside from the food, any other lessons learned from last year?
Yeah, we need a PA system.
Okay.
Because even though Mr. Gallagher has the gift of gab and his very articulate system that we borrowed from REC or the Police Department, I can't remember where, you can only hear it if you were standing right in front of it. So add that to the shotgun list. We might need a professional PA system that can be heard quite a distance. What else did we learn? That's a great question. We learned that at the staging area on the Fourth of July, who knew, it gets hot. Excuse me. So we're trying to figure out how to do a shaded area or an area in the shade because the parade participants were just baking prior to. From a personal perspective, I questioned the validity of having six fire trucks in a row because it was really, really loud at the beginning and then they passed by and then it got really quiet. So we thought maybe we would ask the fire department to do a fire truck and then a float and then a fire truck and a float, still keeping them at the front of the line, so in case of emergency.
Let's see if we can get the Grafton pep band in there.
That would be great. We'll take anybody. We'll take anybody.
Well, I know you were trying to stay away from political things, but you know, could the Select Board put together a float? I like making floats so you guys can just get on it.
Sure.
To that end, for the people watching at home, if somebody did want to put forth a float idea, who do they get in touch with for that?
Well, they can get ahold of me or Justin Stone. I think pretty much everybody knows my email address. They can just reach me through the town, you know, last name, first, first initial, at grafton-ma.gov. Stonies, I could not recite off the top ahead of my life depended on it, so... But we would be the two key contacts.
Is there a deadline for submissions?
To be part of the parade?
Yeah.
We'll take anybody right up to the last minute.
All right.
Yeah. Like I said, we're trying to beef it up.
All right.
So let me get my wife to take part. I'd get her up there.
I like the way you're thinking.
It was excellent participation last year.
It was surprisingly well attended and surprisingly well, you know, that's the word I'm looking for. Participation. Participation was really great considering that we threw it together at the last minute and we really worried what was gonna...
Don't sell yourself short. You guys did a lot to pull that together. That was not pulled together at the last minute.
Yeah, we did. We thought it would be a challenge and it was, but now we're seasoned veterans and so we'll do it again.
All right. Well, yeah, get some quotes and banners and come back and talk to Evan and... Because I don't have any money.
What do you get to do? Let's just cut that out. Balking him straight to me.
There you go. He's got the money.
I'll speak to Evan. I'll call you, whatever works, you know.
Cut out the middleman. Come back here, talk to you about it. You can talk to me about it.
I just like talking about parades, so I just, you know, but...
You have our full support. To go beg Evan for some money? Absolutely.
Keep that right in my back pocket. Thank you. All right.
Well, thank you so much for coming in and giving us the update.
Okay, thanks for your time.
Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
All right, up next on the agenda is Five Millennium Drive LIP proposal. And I believe we have some people here to... Hello?
Good evening.
Sorry, do you mind just introducing yourselves?
Yes, I'm Mark Poprowski. My office is in Concord. I represent Claremont Companies. With me is Bill Lovett from Claremont. And we're here tonight to make a pitch for our local initiative project on a 233-unit proposed project at Five Millennium. I'm gonna let Bill tell you first a little bit about Claremont so that you can become familiar with them and then we'll sort of go back and forth describing the project using the PowerPoint that we've just handed out.
Good evening. Thank you, Bill Lovett from Claremont Companies. Thank you very much for your hospitality this evening. You have a package in front of you as well as the presentation that's on the screen. Claremont is a family real estate office. We're based in Bridgewater, Massachusetts, and we are a long-term owner of residential and hotel assets. We also have some industrial buildings, but we really pride ourselves on being a family company which owns and operates all of our own properties. We're not a merchant builder. The properties that we purchase and develop are all properties that are gonna be in the family for many, many years and generations to come. So that's really an exciting opportunity for us because as we build these properties and these projects, we really focus on the long-term ownership. The people that are gonna be working at the properties are Claremont employees. Whether they're hotels, at our other residential properties, everyone's a Claremont employee. So really exciting to be a part of that and a little different today. The company was founded 55 years ago by Pat Carney. He's the CEO of our company. And again, just from a numbers standpoint, we own and manage over 3,000 apartments currently. We're developing properties in Plymouth, hopefully Grafton, and you know, many other areas, so... There's a list of representative multifamily projects that we have, so you know, we're really focused on and Grafton, the project here that's we're proposing, would be absolutely a class A apartment complex. But these are some representative projects that we own and developed. As I mentioned before, just briefly on our property management, we own and manage all of our assets, so the entire process from our design to our management onsite is all gonna be Claremont. To get to the property piece, assuming everyone's familiar with Millennium Drive and that location, but if we can just scroll to, you know, broad overview, then more of a condensed location, bring it in within, just again, to put perspective on this for everybody. And then finally, to really hone in on the location itself, we are on Millennium Drive. One of the key aspects of this project is we literally abut the commuter train station. So we, and I'll get into this in a moment, but we are gonna be proposing that we have a pathway right to the commuter rail station, which we think, especially today with people commuting, whether it's the Worcester or Boston, not necessarily five days a week, that this location and the proximity really will benefit the use of, you know, commuter rail service, cut down on vehicular transportation. So and, you know, this location, I understand the town is really targeted for development in this location and we think it's fantastic for a multitude of reasons. It is a very rocky site, but we're working through that as well. We spent a lot of time on the plan, which we'll get to in a moment.
Welcome to Grafton.
Yes. Bring your hammer.
Pretty much.
So as I mentioned, we went through a number of different iterations on the property. We looked at tiering it. We looked at, you know, what was gonna be the best project for the community, for the resident. We designed everything ultimately with the resident in mind, but these... So this project, as we worked through different concepts, we were able to come up with a plan that we actually drive past the property or past the project into the upper part of the property and flatten into a nice flat site. Obviously, it's pitched for drainage, but this was able to allow us to really create the best community because we had some previous versions of this where we had one building kinda standing over another building and it just, this one feels the best. We actually were able to work with our neighbor, which was terrific. They had primary colors and we are under contract to purchase a portion of their property as well so we could get some additional area to make sure that we had plenty of parking and were able to minimize the blasting and everything else that's happening on the project.
Can you talk a little bit about the wetland buffer delineation there?
Sure. The wetlands, we had NANRED file, so we are outside of all of the wetlands and everything's been designed outside of the wetlands.
Okay, got it.
So if you go to the next, so conceptually, and these are conceptual drawings, we obviously wanted to have a, hopefully, a very positive conversation with this group and we'll continue to design and develop, but this conceptually is what we're anticipating the property would look like. So again, from an amenity standpoint, you know, this would have a pool. It would have grilling pits. It'll have exercise facilities. We really think because of the nature of this project and the proximity to the woods and everything, that we're really gonna be able to embrace the outdoors here. You'll see in the architecture, we didn't bring the architect tonight, but there's a lot of earth tones and really we wanna fit into the surrounding area here. The numbers, 233 units, we're still working through the unit mix, but what's important to understand here is we'll have, you know, some studios, which are really something that there are not a lot of in this market. So we think we'll be able, especially with the veterinary school, be able to provide a product that isn't really in the market at this point. And we're still working on our mix ultimately, you know, but this will be similar to this mix you see here.
I'm sure you know that under 40B, the rule of DHCD now is that 10% of the units have to be three-digit. Nothing we can do about that.
So you're proposing this as a 40B?
Yes, so LIP would be coast, it's our application, but if you endorse it, which we're going to request you to do, it goes instead to DHCD. It doesn't go to Mass Housing or Mass Housing Partnership. This is the so-called friendly 40B. The subsidy is actually state staff time and your time here at the local level as well.
Okay.
Again, just floor plans to show that this is, you know, two buildings, five stories. We do have an amenity area, a pool courtyard, and then additional amenity in the second building. So both buildings will have amenity. And floor plans, again, still very much in development, but there we have a studio, a one, two, and a three bedroom.
Can I ask what were the one-plus and the two-plus units in the chart there?
I'm sorry?
When you were outlining the breakdown of bedrooms in the residencies, there's a bedroom, one-bedroom plus and two-bedroom plus?
Sure. That is a fancy way of saying one-bedroom den, you know, so a lot of times people will use the den as a study, you know, work from home, so it's a small, be a small, not a bedroom, but a small area. Kinda hits an intermediate price point, too, if you think about it in that regard.
Is there a calculation of the number of parking spaces shown on the plate?
We, I don't know if we included that, but we are parked at a 1.6. It's between 1.6 and 1.7, so we have a pretty strong parking ratio. So we did take a look, we have had some preliminary conversations with town staff. We took a look at projecting the annual income for the town as well as some expenses. So what we're projecting at this point is, based on looking at some of the other properties in the town, income of half a million dollars in annual taxes. We are looking at excise tax, which would, again, we have some calculations here. We didn't assume that every parking spot in the property would have an excise tax associated with it. So you'll notice we have, okay, there it is, right there, 372 parking spaces, ratio of 1.6, but we're only assuming 1.5 on the calculation for the excise tax. We also put a calculation in there for income on, from the sewer and water, again, using the town's rates and volumes here. We also looked at the fees associated with new developments, so water connection, sewer connection, fire protection, and building permit fees, and calculated those at $932,000. So with the annual revenue projections, we're anticipating about $875,000 of revenue on an annual basis generated by the property. On the expense side, we took into account school-aged children. On an average, it would be anticipated, based on the chart that the town's used in the past, 53 school-aged children. Again, looking at the Department of Education from Massachusetts, the total cost of $580,000, just under $581,000 for the school-aged children. We looked at police, fire, and DPW, cost per household. Again, used metrics that have been used previously to determine that, you know, an apartment building isn't necessarily gonna be the same as a single-family house. So we looked at those and adjusted those, as been done in the past. The coming up with a projected cost of just under $700,000 a year, again, on the annual costs. So again, a projection of about $179,000 in revenue, again, as a projection, one-time fees of $932,000, so demonstrating a positive impact overall from the project on, for the community. In addition to 25% affordable for housing, and of which the town would get the credit, you know, under the 40B for 233 units, putting it well, well into over the 10%. And we also think, and this also helps, too, with the MBTA requirement. So we see a lot of positives here. We hope you do, too.
You're proposing 10% affordable?
25%.
Yeah, I heard of it.
25%.
After we've talked a lot with Evan about this, I was led to believe that you're all very familiar with the 40B varieties, whether it's LIP or a mass housing proposal. Are you, do you need a little background on that? I don't wanna...
No, I heard a ratio of 10% according to DHCD. I wasn't sure what that was connected to.
That's the subsidized housing inventory count. If you're over 10%, you're in a safe harbor. You don't have to take any more 40Bs. You can if you want to, but you don't have to.
Got it.
That's the way they...
That's why you're here for a LIP. Sure. Okay, thanks.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, are you done?
One other quick note, just, we did have a traffic impact study done for the property. And as you would hopefully imagine, this, there's really very minimal impact on this, from this property, on traffic in large part because of the MBTA station, et cetera. So we have a full report. We pulled a few snippets from that that are here alone for you with reading them. That was really that and the affordable housing, which we talked about. With the addition of these 233 units, we would get the town to just over 13% on its affordable housing index.
And the census isn't in that number either. It's gonna go down a tiny bit.
Does that include the Eight Pine Street? That's kinda across the street.
Where is it at in the permitting process?
We subtracted it for the purposes of this.
To get to the 13%. Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So going through your projected revenues and projected costs and everything, so the water department is not the town of Grafton's revenue source. So you would have to, based on your information, you'd have to reduce by $76,080, which would bring Grafton's annual net revenue down to $103,830. So we don't have anything to do with the water department. We don't receive any funds from them or revenue or anything from them. So that, it goes from $179,910 to $103,830, which doesn't sound like a lot of revenue for the town of Grafton for 233 apartment units. I'm just throwing that out there. Not that we don't want you guys, 'cause I'm pretty sure that we do, but the $103,000 a year in taxes is not a big windfall for the town of Grafton. So I'm just, again, I'm just throwing it out there.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
I'm sure you don't appreciate it, but...
We appreciate the comment. This is a very challenging world that we're in right now from a development standpoint. I think that's, you know, so we want a project that looks great on paper and we also want a project that we can build. And, you know, that's an important component here.
I have to say, though, that's a pretty typical revenue break, cost benefit, on a 75-25 project. So 75% of these units are market rate, whatever the market will bear, that's the rent. 25% are subsidized, and as a result, we go by a formula that's developed by DHCD and HUD. I've run the numbers on 20 projects, and it's very typical that it's on a project of this sort, which is the gold-plated 40B, where you've got 75% of these units at market rate. Other 40Bs, for example, have tax credit deals where all of the units are affordable. That's a very different financial picture. But on a project of this sort, we're talking Avalon, Fairfield, Princeton Properties, those are the leaders in the field right now. This is the break. It's generally positive, but it's not a windfall.
What's the estimated construction cost?
Construction cost?
Not that I'm going to hold you to it. I'm just trying to get an idea, that's all.
I'd rather, I can follow up with you on that.
Okay. Well, I mean, is it 233 units? You know how much each unit costs, pretty much? It's 25 million, 28 million?
Just for bricks and sticks, it's probably about two... mid-twos.
Mid-twos?
Hundred thousand.
Per unit? So it's 40 million?
Round numbers.
Round numbers. Okay.
What's the, what does that density calculator do? Maybe I'll ask it a different way.
Yeah, how many acres?
Is it, is it more dense than the MBTA required district or zone, rather? Which is, which is 15 units per acre?
It's more than 15.
It is?
It is more than 15.
Okay.
How many acres are that?
18.
18?
And the proposal has all of the affordable units at 80% AMI?
Correct.
Yeah.
On one of the diagrams, it says Republic Parking. Is that public parking for the MBTA? What is Republic?
Republic is the management company for.
So it's for the, it's the MBTA?
Yeah, it's the TLA.
And then in terms of primary colors, because I know that they had some concerns, so you've met with them, and their concerns relative to, you know, kids and whatnot being right there with an industrial area have been mitigated?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yeah, they're, we're under agreement to purchase a component of their property.
So have you guys done a lot of LIPS?
I have.
We have. We've done, at Claremont, we've done... I believe one at Claremont. I've done some in the past as well.
Okay. Can you just talk about the things that you thought were successful with the LIPS? And, you know, how you didn't end up working with the, with the select board? We've had really, well, we've had two different developers come in proposing LIPS, and we've had very different experiences, largely positive with both developers, but I'm just interested in how you guys work with towns on LIP proposals.
So I've had mixed experience with LIPS. It's supposed to be easy, and your endorsement is supposed to be a signal to the Board of Appeals that all's well. Move to the head of the line, on we go. The last one I did was in Dartmouth. It took two years and seven months, but the site was dirty.
When you got to ZBA? Or just?
Through ZBA.
Okay.
But the site was very dirty.
Yeah.
And it had a checkered pass that was in litigation. We had to, you know, really pull the threads in order to make it all come together. Other projects, I did a, I proposed a Billrica 40B years ago when the select board was very anti. And we converted it momentarily to a 40R, went through the application process, and then they realized that my client was pretty much going to do the same thing and even make some improvements that were ultimately going to be the money from the 40Rs. So he volunteered to do the improvements, and that project is on Boston Road in Billrica. It's about 175 units. Those are probably my two most recent ones.
Got it.
Do a lot of, do a lot of 40Rs, too.
Yeah.
So for us as a developer at Claremont, we want to be good neighbors. We're going to be long-term neighbors here. We have a pretty good sense of, you know, just from our experience, but in our involvement in developing these properties, we have, you know, terrific consultants and groups that really make this be a long-term investment for ourselves and, you know, and a great place for people to live. So, you know, we want to be a part of the community.
One of the things we did in Billrica that really worked very well was that we sort of pre-permitted it at the Board of Selectment. And then that was developed as an agreement between the Board of Select. It was, in order to sign the LIP application, we had an agreement with the Selectmen, and it was just like a permit. They pre-negotiated it, passed it along to the Board of Appeals. When we got to the Board of Appeals, they didn't disturb any of that, and the project got built.
I wouldn't expect that here in Grafton. But what we have done is aimed for a memorandum of agreement. So any terms we agree on with concessions that you guys make, payments to the town, sidewalks, whatever, we would want that in a document to go along with the endorsement.
So five-story, 72 feet, 73 feet?
60, probably around 65.
65 with five stories?
Yep.
And what type of heating system?
We haven't designed.
Haven't designed that yet? Okay.
Do we have anybody that would like to volunteer to negotiate the LIP?
I'd be more than happy to do that again.
I would feel comfortable with that. How does everybody else feel? Do we need to take a motion for that, or?
No, I don't think so.
Nah, go for it.
Right. Ray, you're our guy.
I'm the nice one.
So just to look down the path a little bit, we would, tonight, ask whether you're interested in seeing a LIP application. It's a little bit of work for us to throw it together. We'd get it to you. Obviously, it's all very preliminary. If we're going to make some sort of an agreement out of an MOA of some sort, then that's the next step beyond getting the application just filled out. But we would anticipate that that's your idea of how we would go forward.
Madam Chair, I mean, that's something I'd be in favor of, definitely. You know, I think this is a, as far as, as far as MBTA and, you know, apartments in the area, without creating a great impact on the town. I think it's, would I like to have a, you know, 100,000 square foot industrial building over there? Yeah, I would. But, you know, this is, this is, I think it's a great project, you know?
Thank you.
Okay.
I don't know if you're taking public comment. You do have one hand on film.
Sure.
And Terry, if you unmute yourself, you should be able to talk.
Good evening. It's not Terry. It's Jeff Turden. I apologize. Good evening, Select Board. I just had two questions. One, surrounding the fact of this beautiful project here and the impact to the schools. We have a number of other projects going around as well, all over town. And this appears to be adding up in my head, and I don't know if we have a plan to get the superintendent to kind of give us where we are as of today. With these projects coming online and 56 kids from this project, 34 from the other, 20 something from the other, that seems to be adding up. The second question I have, I think Ray brought up the concern with the other facility going in behind the Stop &amp; Shop, where it was a four-story, and you requested it become a three-story because our fire structures could not reach it. Is that still a concern for this facility?
I can, I can answer, I can answer that. We did, Snow Road had nothing to do with, with the fire department reaching, reaching the roof, and it's 65 feet, which is probably going to be a little bit higher. But even at 70 feet, there's, there's no issue of the fire department hitting, you know, reaching that.
Great, great, great.
Hang on, but the issue that we have here, and we can discuss this later, is access. That's all.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
And Jeff, as far as the school-aged children and an impact on the schools, the latest information that we have that I'm aware of is the schools did a study as of 2019, which included everything up to the Pine Street development. So it included most of what's going, getting occupancy permits at the moment. And they didn't have concerns about school capacity.
2019 sounds pretty old to me.
Yep, no, I totally get it. I'm just telling you what I know that's factual. I think it's a, it's a good question that probably.
Madam Chair, can I?
Yes.
Also?
Sure.
So I just had a conversation today with Dr. Cummings about school-aged children and impacts from development. And so we're working with the schools and the planning office to review our projections post-Eight Pine Street and work with the school department on what that looks like.
Great.
But we've got it, I think, in hand. We're paying attention to it. It's not just creeping up out, out in the hinterlands.
Perfect. Thank you.
So I'm on the Select Board rep on the Affordable Housing Trust. If there is any opportunity for you guys to move the bar down for AMI at all on some units, that would be something that would definitely be of significant benefit to the town. That would definitely, for this select board member, make a huge difference in terms of endorsing this project.
I have a question. What is, what is the materials that you'll use for the building? Is it wood or?
They haven't been completely defined at this point, but, I mean, primarily hardy planks or cement, fiberglass panels. That's, we'll probably have some masonry on there as well.
But it's stick frame?
It is stick frame.
Yeah, okay.
So wood.
Okay. Does the board have any other questions or comments, or are we just going to? Any green-type initiatives with your building? Have you done that anywhere else?
We do, yeah. I mean, so it's a very broad question, but yes. I mean, there's a, certainly just the location's obviously a very important component of that. But low-flow toilets and water fixtures, the insulation, you know, there's a, there are a lot of components that we, but we'd be happy to go through that in more detail.
Okay. You all said Amory?
Yep.
Okay.
Salute your attention. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll reach out to Evan, and we'll set up a communication going forward. Give you my contact information. Feel free to call anytime to start conversation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next on the agenda is the vote for the regional dispatch inter-municipal agreement. I'm going to let Evan talk about that. Today was kind of a good day for that.
Yeah. So a little flurry of activity right at the end of the day, obviously. Two minor changes that I don't think impact anything that was in the IMA that you guys had since Friday. One just changes the date from June 30th to June 1st, which was at the recommendation and request of 911 Department, just because of the way that their schedule falls. And the other one just made mention of the building in Westborough being leased by the district, which was, has always been the, the plan, right? Whatever town it's in, it's going to have to be leased as municipal property. But otherwise, everything else remains status quo. So we're able to keep intact our preferred model of governance. Everything else just wound up being changes that were based upon each community's specific politics, essentially. It's how that, how that goes. Everybody wants some language change or tweak here and there. But otherwise, it, as far as the breadth and intent of the document, it remains very much the same document that it was four months ago.
About the, I didn't see any reference in there to the backup PSAP or whatever it is. I didn't see that in there, so.
Backup, I mean, reference, it does talk about having a second answering.
Okay.
Department.
I must have.
I'm not, I'm not able to point it to you top of mind.
Yeah, no, no, that's fine.
Because it was part of our, it was part of our conversation, was that essentially you need failover to somewhere? And where would that be? And so that's definitely part of the IMA as well as the conversation moving forward to identify and codify that failover.
Okay.
On the old one, it was page four, like, not this last iteration, but the iteration before?
Yeah.
Section D, 5D? I don't have it in front of me here.
Yep, it's still 5D.
Yeah, secondary answering, thank you, Amory. Secondary answering point and radio dispatch system operated by the district and alternative public safety answering point will be determined by the Operations Committee prior to commencement.
Okay.
Great. Must have bypassed that one.
Yeah. Well, when you said it, I was like, oh, do we delete that? I hope not. No, but it was in there. We had a.
Sometimes I speed read and hurt myself, so.
We did have a pretty long conversation about that, because we changed some of the language there to match what 911 is now calling things, so.
So I know the other communities are voting tonight or?
Tonight and tomorrow, yeah.
Tonight and tomorrow. What happens if one says no? That was my question, too.
Yep, so there's, there's really two ways to go about it. One is that we would just redraft and re-sign. The other is what I've seen happen and been a part of is, they literally scratched it out, initialed it, and that was that. I would, I would recommend that we redraft. I mean, it's just cleaner. And nothing fundamentally changes that we can control at this point, so.
Redraft it with three communities?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And would that then change, you know, the bottom line in terms of numbers over the first year, the second year, so on and so forth?
So the first, no, the first three would remain exactly the same, right? And so there's potential, yes, that our, our amount that we would need to pay in as an assessment will go up. The caveat I would say to that is that we don't fully know what the state's incentive is going to look like at that point. And I would also say that if you look at the projected numbers for our local, adding staff, then adding, you know.
Infrastructure and.
Yeah, but also, all of that, we're still, we have plenty of buffer in there to still come out ahead. I mean, even if we paid 450 instead of 350, we would still be in good shape.
Okay.
For what we have to pay. I don't, I don't think that's what the numbers will, will do even with, with three.
Is there any rumblings of other communities that are interested? Or you just kind of go down the path with these four and?
So without outing anybody, I will say we've sniffed around, and there's some interest out there, whether or not that gets codified into real interest. What, what I saw happen with other PSAPs is you get that kind of initial interest, and then the communities that are serious about it, they move forward. And then it's a year or two, something will happen in the other community where now it becomes a necessity or something that, you know, there's, there's pressure there to move over, and then they do.
I'm just thinking, if we were potentially to lose one, is there kind of someone that might be out there thinking?
Yeah, we, we are, both of our chiefs have been.
Yeah.
You know, doing their chief thing out there and talking it up, so. We're hopeful that we, with at least three, build a structure, or build a, a, a emergency communication center that's able to handle another two, three, four, five communities. And then, you know, once you, once you build it and you've done all the heavy lifting, then people want to come on board. So that's, that's the talk right now.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing that, I can take a motion.
I move the board vote to accept the provisions of Sections 18O to 18V, inclusive of Chapter 6A of the general laws providing for the establishment of a regional 911 emergency communication district together with the towns of Westborough, Hopkinton, and Southborough, and the construction or siting, administration, operation, and maintenance of a regional 911 emergency communication center by the district under the provisions of the proposed district agreement filed with the Select Board. by the district under the provisions of the proposed district agreement filed with the select board and authorized the chair to sign.
Second.
Motion made. Seconded. Any discussion?
That was an impressive motion.
Top of mind, you came up with that.
You read it.
Wow, you're so good at that.
He didn't he didn't take that off the copy.
Okay. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, declare the motion carried.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Long.
Thank you for all your diligence.
Long, long time coming, a lot of work.
Absolutely.
To get to this point, so.
All right.
Now more work. Starting up different kind. Thank you.
So who's who else is voting tonight?
That's what I was gonna.
Us, it's Hopkinton and.
Hopkinton and I believe it's Southborough and Westboro is tomorrow.
All right.
Tonight we'll know.
Yeah, we'll know tonight. Up next is discuss the Grafton Upton Railroad. Anne Marie, you requested to have this on the agenda, so I'll tee it up to you.
Yeah, thanks, Colleen. I just wanted to go back to last week because I didn't want to speak out of turn while I was here. But I did go back and listen to the the discussion with the G U R R, G U R R folks at our forum. And in fact, the gentleman that was presenting there on more than one occasion, he opened with it and then I think on two or three other times indicated that our police and our fire were called immediately. And that's what I was trying to get to the bottom of. And it wasn't so much thinking about should they have been involved or not? Did the incident warrant calling police and fire or not? It was more a matter of public that was there that evening seems to have some, you know, trust issues with the railroad. I haven't had a lot of interactions with the railroad, I will admit. And just having that stated a number of times, you know, just was an issue for me. And I wanted to find out via email, not necessarily publicly, you know, how that all came to be. Secondly, I wanted to just make sure that we, and I believe this is really going probably to the fire chief, that it was also brought up that night about some sort of, you know, testing. Well, water testing was one thing at the Flint Pond, but there was something else in terms of oversight, you know, that there go people are someone's going in there and and making sure that everything is being done properly. And I believe that our fire chief would be involved in that. I just want to make sure that that that's happening or that will be happening and that their lines of communication are, you know, solid and that somehow we find out that that's actually happening. It's not our oversight, I don't believe, but I would want to. I mean, I guess ultimately it is.
You guys oversee the fire chief.
I understand. But in terms of, I'm not gonna go in with whoever is doing those, you know, walkthroughs or or inspections, I guess is what they are. But I just want to be sure that we are doing what we're supposed to be doing in a timely manner and that we know that that's happening. And then the last thing I wanted to bring up, well, I just wanted to circle back to the horns. And if we have been doing, if Ray's been sleeping out there and finding out how many times that horn is blowing, or if we came up with some other system, because that was a few weeks ago, and if we have any more information on that.
Yep. So I I researched a camera, actually, and sent that over to the police department. So they're supposed to be evaluating that probably purchasing it or something similar.
Okay.
We're gonna go that route rather than
Great.
Ray with his tent.
And and the horns have not totally stopped, but they've lessened considerably since our meeting. So.
And that you've got that from like the neighbors that had the concerns there?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, that's good.
The water testing piece. So I did some research on that. I can't find any record of the water testing. The only folks that would be involved in that that I haven't spoken to yet is the Blackstone River Trust. I'm probably saying that wrong, the nonprofit that oversees the health and safety of the Blackstone.
Like the corridors and.
Yeah, there's a there's a water group. Leah from Conservation is in contact with them. She gave me their contact info. I haven't spoken to them yet, but I could not find any reference to water testing or the the need for water testing or what would trigger that. I spoke to Conservation. They don't have any record of what that is. So we are still actively tracking it down. I just don't have any
Okay.
clear answer to that.
Okay. Because I just thought that that was compelling that someone brought that up. And in fact, I had no idea that what are we supposed to be doing? And are we doing it, you know?
Yeah, and I don't know.
Not even just the.
No, no, no. Yeah, who's the who's the responsible party, right? So is it Grafton Upton Railroad supposed to be hiring someone to do the testing? Is it the state's doing the testing? Is it this nonprofit? You know, it's just a little bit murky if testing is even mandated, because I I haven't found that yet. And then the 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 safety report is supposed to be through the Fire Marshal's Office. And I believe at the the meeting, Chief Matthews said that he was gonna reach out to them and see what the status is. But it might be something to follow up with him.
Yeah.
About and make sure that that's in motion.
Yep, great.
Okay, any other questions or comments about this topic? All right, moving on to an update on seventeen and twenty seven Upton Street.
Yep. So as you're all aware from the meeting of the seventh, we're working on the purchase and sale agreement with GSX as well as the Affordable Housing Trust. And we have all three attorneys in contact and are working through the language that's in that that particular purchase and sale. So I don't have a huge update. We had a meeting today to start the conversation with all the the parties. And so I would anticipate by next meeting, I have a firm answer for you as to what actions the board can and cannot take.
So on this, the I wanna I wanna just read this this portion of the purchase and sale agreement. The buyer shall have a period of one year after the effective date of this agreement to obtain permits and approvals, which shall be known as the entitlement period. Buyer shall also have the right to extend the entitlement period for a period of not to exceed twelve months by providing notice therefore thereof the seller prior to the expiration of the entitlement period and delivering to escrow agent the additional deposit of fifty thousand dollars. That was not done. Currently, we have no P N S with anybody on this piece of property. And and.
So I just want to be clear.
Yep.
Just because we're saying it out loud doesn't mean that that's the truth, because we we have to wait for the attorney to give us that opinion.
Correct.
Okay.
So we put in that little paragraph there, so I don't get in trouble.
Right. That's why they pay me to sit over here.
I don't care. But I really think that the board needs to look at this project. Look at what's gone on in this project. And in my opinion, put it out to an R F P and do this all over again. There are developers that are interested in this project. And and I just don't think that that any I don't think that a developer that has a deal like this or has put together a deal like this where the entitlement period, you know, expired in October of twenty twenty two is really, you know, interested in this project. And I think the town, it's time to the top for the town of Grafton to move on.
Do you have anything we gotta hear?
Oh, no, no. But I'm I'm just, it's, this is my opinion.
Understood.
We're not going down the legal road or anything like that. I mean, I I read this whole thing and I know what rights they have and what rights they don't have. So so but I'm just saying, I think it's time for us to move on. And, you know, I know Bruce was here and said that, you know, he'd like to, you know, redo this and everything and and give them a two year timeframe and. Uh, yeah, you know, we've given, we haven't given timeframes on a lot of people who have done projects in this in in town. And and now they're biting us in the backside. And and I don't think that I'm not in favor of of giving anybody two years to get plans and permits. You know, just because you show up with a gold shovel doesn't mean that you're gonna do, you're gonna put it in the ground. So that's that's just my opinion on this whole thing. I think we should move on.
Understood. Ray's opinion is noted.
And is in fact an opinion.
Just.
Heights. How many times did I say opinion?
I know. I liked that. That was a great correction.
Are there any other opinions before we move on?
I I think it's worth considering. And, you know, I think that was what part of what Bruce was saying was the town should consider its opinion on moving forward with GSX or not and make it clear so that the Housing Trust and GSX has clarity on what our intentions are. So I think it makes perfect sense to look at it. I don't have the facts or haven't really thought much about it, so I look forward to the discussion, but I think we should have it.
Yeah, absolutely. Right.
I might be mixing up properties because we have discussed this, but I was I was under the impression that GSX was the only person who bid on this R F P.
They were.
At the time, yeah. But I think things have changed.
You think there'll be new interests?
Opinions are saying that things have changed.
I guess I'm asking where that opinion is based.
Where all opinions are based.
Wow.
Well, at the time, too, I mean, GSX, they, it was handy because they were doing the Pine Street, you know.
Right. They still are doing Pine Street.
That's your opinion.
And you know what, Andy? There's a thing that we used to say in construction, opinions alike. Everybody has one.
Yeah.
Hard pass.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. So let's, I think we're good. I think we've got all of our opinions out and we can move right on to land acknowledgements.
Send me the bill from my ulcer.
Awesome.
All right. So William took some of our feedback and put together a lovely land acknowledgement. I'm gonna ask our clerk if he would be so kind as to read it.
So the draft reads as follows. The Grafton Select Board acknowledges that the land the town of Grafton is located on is a traditional and unceded territory of several nations of indigenous people, namely the Nipmuck Nation, which continues to reside on the land today. This acknowledgement is to be read at the annual town meeting in May to remember that in sixteen fifty four, the colonial legislature established the third praying Indian village of Hassanamessit, which is today known as Grafton. We denounce the violence of colonialism, which stripped these original stewards of lands that were their ancestral home. We seek to better educate ourselves and honor these lands. We recognize and honor the Nipmuck, who were displaced and celebrate those who returned and remain today. Let this acknowledgement serve as a reminder for all people when they're enjoying the land, wildlife, and beaut- natural beauty of Grafton, of our commitment to being good stewards of the land and supporting the rights and interests of indigenous people.
All right. How does everybody feel about this version of the land acknowledgement?
What happened to the one that we found?
That really wasn't a land acknowledgement as much as a proclamation from the Nipmuck Nation. And some of that language is included in here. That's when I drafted my idea of what a land acknowledgement should look like, I pulled some of the language from that, and it's it's definitely represented in here.
So is this going back to the Nipmuck Nation, just like it was before, that everybody signed it and or approved it, or it's not gonna do that?
That other thing was them to us.
Yeah.
Right.
This is us, too.
Everybody.
I'd also, I mean, I was gonna wait and see where the discussion went, but I would probably suggest that we don't take a vote on this tonight. And instead, if we get the draft to a position where we feel like everybody's in agreement, we send it back through the Nipmuck Nation Tribal Council, who came and and discussed this with the board and said they'd be happy to work through it with us as well as reaching out to the local Hassanamisco Nipmuck Band who operate locally and and try to garner feedback from both parties before taking a vote.
I would agree with that, Andy.
Sounds good. Are you volunteering to send it over to them?
I am.
Thank you.
Um.
So just some, if you guys are all right, I think Andy and I both researched this quite a bit. So this is a good first step. But these are ultimately just words. I mean, I feel a little bit awkward signing off on some language if we don't actually mean it. The way that this all like evolved, somebody came to us with some language and an idea that we should have this in place and this didn't emerge from the board. The the land acknowledgement and the process of doing a land acknowledgement has to do with research and connecting to the local indigenous population and an ongoing commitment to them, I guess. You know, is this board on board with an ongoing commitment? Because otherwise, this is a tick box exercise that I'm really not comfortable with, you know. Are we actually, for example, maybe one of the things we could do in the same way that we have defined a goal to improve our relationship with Tufts and the Grafton Upton Railroad. I think, you know, there's very little that we can do as a municipality, really. But can we have as a goal that we actually have some kind of ongoing communication with the local indigenous population, right? When, you know, we have an indigenous Peoples Dana that's in Grafton, what are we doing for that? You know, it'd be nice if we had some educational opportunities at the library or, you know, if we're serious about this, and it's not just some words on a piece of paper. It's it's, I'd be much more interested in this if we were going that direction, where it became something that was an ongoing concern of the board and interest of the town to move forward with trying to have that better relationship. You know, a lot of the, a lot of the discussion with the the mascot was, you know, we 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 really honor the the local indigenous population. And so I, and a lot of people who grew up in Grafton felt that way, that we had this relationship with them. I just, I don't know how healthy and ongoing that is on a continuing continuing basis. So for me, if we're gonna move forward with this, I would, I would like to partner that with that with the idea that this isn't where it ends, that we just read a thing at town meeting, but that it's some type of developing, ongoing improved relationship that we're that we seek out, I guess. And again, I don't know how much there really is that we can really do in a material way, in a meaningful way, but it to just do this just doesn't seem right to me. So that's my opinion.
I think we were both aligned on that, that the the real value comes in the action instead of the words. And I think we, I've stated before, do have a good general commitment to our lands and waterways and in improving, you know, our general open space and and making them accessible to people. Yeah, I I agreed with Matt. And I think I think, you know, even at a minimum, this board is an entity to raise those voices and and help maybe some of those indigenous people be heard more or get some of that, you know, promote events to bring some of that culture back to the forefront. So I think I I agree that I think it's it's something we should try to add to our goals to, you know, increase and foster that relationship and and just do whatever we can to help them feel supported.
Yep. I think ongoing education is probably the biggest thing. So, you know, that that seems to be the biggest, you know, the intention of the the land acknowledgement is actually it's a lot about education and making sure that there's a a living knowledge that's growing and evolving in appreciation of the indigenous people that, you know, that were once here and and some of which still live here today. So yeah, I just, I just want to, I guess, plant the seed that that this isn't the end of it.
I'm just gonna chime in. My daughter and I were in Santa Fe in August and had an opportunity to speak to a number of Native Americans. And actually, I don't remember the the couple of chiefs who we were able to engage with, but it was it was phenomenal. And what they drove home to both of us was exactly what you're saying. You know, we come up with words in America, you know, just in general, relative to the Native American people that we think, you know, honor them, et cetera. But then are they involved? And additionally, what are we doing, right? Like, what's the action item? Which the woman who came that evening or spoke to us one way or the other, that was kind of what she said, like, what's the action item, right? I will tell you that I, in my draft to William, I don't think that I did a great job coming up with an action item either, but I agree that I think that that would be something that we should consider. I mean, for me, it felt like, you know, land and preservation, et cetera, but making sure that we are including the individuals that we're speaking of in drafting something that we're going to say in their honor and or do something for them, so.
It's not a simple thing. I mean, if you think about repatriating lands, to who? Who, why? From a from a legal standpoint, you've got a property with a with a title. Who does that go to? If so, I don't even know if it's possible for some of the things that you could contemplate. So the point is that this has to be kind of an ongoing initiative that just plays out. And and I think this is a really good first step, but that's all it is.
So for me, when they came and talked to us about the land acknowledgement, it was very clear to me that they wanted us to write it. They did not want to write it for us and then have us just read it back. And while I'm very in support of having them review what we've come up with, I I don't wanna ask them to do any work for us. This is something that we had brought to us, and we decided, yes, we wanna continue doing this, and we came up with our own words, and I think it should be checked. And I think there's an action item right in here, which is to read it at town meeting. That's the action item. And it might seem small, but you've gotta start small, and it'll snowball and grow, and just even ta- taking the time to come up with words for this land acknowledgement was a lot of reflection and and making that time at town meeting that'll help, you know, snowball and make other people take that moment and reflect and find ways in their own lives to try to, you know, bring different action items. And I think I don't think we can solve it all, and I I think you're really big, but if we start small, it it will get there.
Yeah, I agree.
I think you're saying the same thing.
Oh, we're we're hundred, we're all saying the same thing.
Yes, first step in in a long process. And there's bound to be some discomfort, you know, along the way. I think it's it's valid to point that out to, you know, not only the board, but but residents, that, you know, it's a it can be a difficult topic to discuss and and you know, there are gonna be feelings along the way, so it's just something we'll be prepared to deal with and work through together.
I just as an aside, I don't know if when you guys are doing any research on this, I came upon last year, there was a golf tournament at High Fields. It was the one where Snoop Dogg was in town. I don't know if you guys heard about that.
I don't know how I missed that.
Yeah. So, anyway.
Did you go?
Relative, no, I don't golf, but relative, but we were out and about and we knew what was going on. Relative to that golf tournament, they did a full, I mean, it was like almost a two-page acknowledgement to, you know, for Grafton, it was, I don't know, look it up if you get a chance. It was a golf tournament last summer, and they did a pretty substantial, and I I'm trying to think if there were action items per se, but I was pretty impressed that they somebody came up with this. It was the first time I'd seen something like that.
It was a cannabis golf court.
It was, yeah, I know.
I'm I'm shocked at that.
Ray, did you play?
Nope. He doesn't recall.
His opinion was, he did not.
But, you know, talk about like an action item where just this group came into our town and they it was their action item, that they actually had this as part of their packet, yeah.
So where we're leaving it today is Andy's gonna reach out to have some feedback, and then we'll bring it back to the board to discuss further. Is that where everybody's comfortable with right now?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah?
Yep.
No?
Yeah, no, I don't have any more action items.
Okay.
For all those people that are playing the action item drinking game at home.
You know that was a game.
Oh, you're playing the opinion game, that's why. Alright, so up next is the Schedule the Select Board Lunch at the Senior Center. So I'm sure you guys saw on the packet that there were a couple of dates in March, and I just didn't know if any of those jumped out to anybody to go have a lunch at the Senior Center.
Did I email you about this or no? With date, with dates, no?
I did not receive anything from you at this. So the the email had March twenty-second, March twenty-third, March twenty-ninth, or March thirtieth. Lunch typically starts at eleven forty-five, so out of those days, what works best for everybody so we can go on down and starting with Ray.
I'm good any day, any day.
Great.
I'm gonna pass, I just need to look at my calendar.
Yeah. The twenty-second or the twenty-ninth would be better for me.
So you like a Wednesday?
Yeah.
Wednesday would be good.
Okay, so two for Wednesday. Do you guys have any preference on the twenty-second or the twenty-ninth? I thought I had replied on this.
I have a datebook at home, so.
No problem.
Without it. What did you say with the choices right now?
Right now, we've kind of narrowed it down to Wednesday, the twenty-second, or Wednesday, the twenty-ninth.
I'll go with the twenty-ninth, I'm not entirely sure.
Okay, so twenty-ninth is the leader at this point, so let's we'll reach back out, we'll set it for the twenty-ninth, and then, you know, as life goes on, if things come up, they
I can email you right after this.
Okay. Great, so we'll do that. And then Select Board Reports, does anybody have any Select Board Reports?
My daughter just said, do you want me to check with your datebook? Sorry, Keely. I say yes.
Okay, so we can move right on to Town Administrator Reports.
Ooh. Very nice. Yeah, it's Valentine's Day.
Seriously?
Yeah. I have to get in the get in the the mood. I'm with all of you on Valentine's Day, which is lovely.
Please don't get in the mood.
I don't know what kind of mood you're getting into, but.
Budgeting mood.
Make it Ray uncomfortable.
This is this is what, never mind.
It's your opinion.
Okay, so budgeting process continues. Obviously, we're gonna be doing this straight up until May. So we've done our budget presentation of both the town and the school, which includes the Finance Committee. We've been working on our budget revisions. We have ongoing reviews of of every single line item with the department heads, just to to verify some of our our reporting. And we refined staff requests, so what that means is that we went back through after the initial projections with the School Committee. We had a surplus of three hundred and fifty-one thousand in our first pass. We are now at four hundred and eighty-eight thousand. That's prior to revenue coming in that we expect to be higher, so we're trending in the right direction. I'm working very diligently on that. FinCom just started their scheduling process, so we have our our one marathon Saturday lined up, as well as two other Wednesday nights. Department heads have been given really good feedback. Everybody's on board, so looking forward to that. It's usually a fun day. Our capital plan, there's gonna be one revision that needs to be made to that, and I'll be circling back with CIPC on that. And that is the replacement of the phone system in the Police Department. So you may remember that we upgraded the phone system in the Fire Department, because that was pretty much just kaput. They were weren't even getting incoming phone calls. And we did that to be able to fail over to the Police Department. Now, the Police Department's phone system is pretty much end of life and not a good recipient of the failover. So we are, you know, it's twenty sixteen vintage, which doesn't sound super old, but in the world of phones and telecom, it's pretty old. So we're gonna be looking to replace that, so I've added that into the capital plan, which we did have capacity into to accept that, so I'll push that back out. And then town meeting, we have received one resident petition so far. And, you know, Will started with the warrant draft, just categorizing everything and capturing it and getting everything structured.
What was the resident petition?
To accept Johncous Terrace as a public way.
Oh, boy.
As those.
That's a that's, never mind.
As those come in, in the past, it's been practice where citizens institutions can come in and present to the board their petition. So I think we'll we'll have them come in and talk about their petition with us.
Yep.
It's right next to across Noel's Motors, Noel Motors, it's it's a.
It goes basically behind Bolak Plaza there.
Got it.
There the it's actually interesting, so I've been researching it a little bit, and so the the Johncous House is basically the only house on Johncous Terrace.
Yep.
Which I think honestly, if you look back throughout Massachusetts with these private ways, this is what happens, right? At a certain point, people carve off land, carve off land, and then you wind up with one family that, you know, really not gonna do a lot with that property, because you can't, no one wants to buy a house with its own street, especially not not there. It's not like it's some dead end into the middle of the woods or something, you know, so. I think we'll see this come up more and more.
There was a building built there that used the road as their setback.
Yeah, saw that. So they are actually.
The magic of.
Yeah, so they're they're currently doing some cleanup at Bolak Plaza, and so we've been, we were over there for for that as well. So, pretty pretty interesting, looking at some of the history there. So, the D E and I project questionnaire goes out next Monday, or the twenty-first?
Week from today.
Week from today goes out, so that'll we'll start getting some data there. That's pretty exciting. Ninety-five North Street, they've had some initial meetings and just starting to kick off some of that project. So that will start garnering some some additional information for you. Westboro Water Main, we've started to get some of the billing for the design, and we have the design review tomorrow at nine AM. So, the design is complete. So we are making some pretty significant process that progress there. I say we, I just show up to that meeting, and they tell me what they've done. So it's it's one of my favorite projects. Interviews, so we've been doing a lot of interviewing. We have hired someone for the Assistant Finance Director position, so we'll have an appointment memo in that air in your packet for next week. And we've interviewed one person that was interested in the Board of Assessors. We have one more interview, I think, tomorrow or Thursday. Public Employee Committee, so we have final health insurance numbers. We've submitted them to the union groups that are represented there. And we're hopeful that in the next week or so, we're gonna have a affirmative vote. That will solidify our healthcare number for the upcoming fiscal year, which is good, cause that's, I think we're eight to ten meetings deep in that process as well, so. Arpa Committee, we are meeting next week?
The week after.
Week after.
Twenty-seventh?
What's that?
I think it's twenty-seventh. I noticed that when I was looking at the agendas. The Monday of the twenties, whatever that is.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, next one? That's all I've got. The one other thing I just wanted to mention is, so we continue to do the office hours at the Senior Center. Do one hour a month. I'm now consistently getting people that are waiting for me there. They're like a like a line of people and take up the the full hour to an hour and a half. So we're getting some great feedback, and some of it is truly just the lowest of the low hanging fruit to fix. And so that's exciting, because these are people that have sat on things or asked for things ten years ago that didn't get resolved, but are things that we can pretty quickly rectify. So that that's been that's been a lot of fun, and I just wanted to put out there that if any of you are interested in doing an office hour with me in the Senior Center, I just, you know, give me a month or two heads up so that they can advertise that in the newsletter. The newsletter has a very wide reach. And I'd be happy to have you come sit, and it's it's a lot of fun. People just come up, and what I what I also like is that if no one's waiting for me there, the seniors, I think, feel bad for me just sitting there, and they will just come over and chat, which is nice, cause you get to meet people and they tell you their backgrounds and what they have going on. It's a really it's a it's a nice way to to get to know people, so.
Sign me up.
Okay.
Yeah, me too.
Okay.
I went when I was campaigning, it was fun.
Yeah, I'll put out some of the future dates, and you can let me know which ones work.
Great.
Yeah, so a lot of fun, and I appreciate them letting me letting me do that, so.
Alright, well, thank you for that. Any correspondence anybody wants to discuss? Alright, there are no resignations. There's nobody in the room for public comment. Is there anybody online for public comment?
You do have one hand for public comments.
Great. Hello, Nancy.
Hello, Nancy Piccone, Three High Point Drive. I just have a quick question about campaigning at the Senior Center with our election season just starting again?
Yep.
What's the.
My question is, is there's a bylaw that says that you cannot campaign on town property, like you can't go campaign in the municipal center? And unfortunately, we, I was with Stacy Bennett Norton, Norton Bennett, whatever her name is, last year, when we went, she went for her visit to the Senior Center, and there was actually quite an incident that I reported to the Board of State Ethics about an employee there and a member of multiple boards in town. And it was really unfortunate what happened. And I, the Board of Ethics did state to me that campaigning should not be happening at the Senior Center. Not like you guys' lunch thing, like campaigning, like people, I know it's been the practice here forever, but it went really badly last year, and I can share my ethics complaint with you now because it has been resolved. I was waiting a long time for that, so.
Okay, so we will be sure not to have campaigning then.
Yeah, so Nancy, one of the the things that we took away from that, obviously, you and I have spoken about it, and I was aware of the ethics issue, so we're no longer doing those campaign-oriented sessions. So the this is one of the goals that the board has had, is to spend more time in the Senior Center and and interact with the seniors, so they'll be doing that as a board and not as candidates.
That that's that's a hundred percent perfect, like they should be interacting. I love that you're doing the office hours. I think the campaigning just went a little wrong, and that shouldn't happen, that's all, so.
We we agree with you a hundred percent, and I think we've taken the necessary steps to ensure that that doesn't happen. I know that I've already had a conversation with Shane, our new director, who's very cognizant of of that. So I I don't I don't think that you'll see that again. I mean, that's not our policy moving forward.
I really appreciate that you addressed that and addressing it going forward. Have a good night, everybody. Thank you.
You too, Nancy.
Thank you, Nancy.
So you said some municipal buildings, or?
Yeah, so you we really shouldn't be having campaigning in in municipal buildings.
So anything that's owned by the town?
Yeah.
It's fine, I'm just it's good to know.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause I would see it from a center.
Well, I think everybody did, so I I don't think that's an uncommon practice.
Sure, I know.
Um.
So higher, one Grafton comment, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, so I think that one of the things that is is, you know, an important takeaway is that you can still do political activity. It has to be universal, right? So some towns, you'll see the Senior Centers host candidate night.
Sure.
Every candidate can come. It's not just one person comes and interacts, it's it's a debate night, it's things like that. There are all those events. We League of Women Voters do that type of activity. But I think that the crux of the the ethics complaint that we received and and that I think we've learned from is that we just, we need to draw that line, you know, between the individual campaigning. People can't just show up here and go in the Senior Center and and try to, you know, glad-hand and get votes. We don't, we just, we're not doing that anymore. It's it's problematic.
It's very timely, cause I've been asked to speak at a league thing related to campaigning, so it's good to know.
Yep, yep. I I also just, and and we can talk more in-depth offline out, but if if a group invites you to speak on behalf of of to an issue or something that you have knowledge of, you're not there campaigning, cause you're not running for a public office, you are an elected official that's sharing knowledge of whatever it is, you know, Andy gets brought in there for I don't know, I just drew a totally, some kind of graphic design type thing?
The Scouts do like a civic thing, though, right?
Right, so that's different, right?
Bring in like a community leader.
Right, and so we just need to be more cognizant and aware of where that line is.
Sure.
You know, civics and civic engagement is not campaigning. Campaigning is a very specific activity, and we're making sure that we've drawn that distinction.
Okay.
Great.
Anybody else for public comment?
No hands on Zoom.
Alright, so we have a couple set of meeting minutes that we can vote on?
I move the board vote to approve the meeting minutes for May twenty-four, twenty twenty-two, and January twenty-four, twenty twenty-three, as written.
Twenty twenty.
Sorry, May twenty-four, twenty twenty-two, and January twenty-four, twenty twenty-three, as written.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? I propose to declare the motion carried. We have no reason to go into this. I oppose, declare the motion carried. We have no reason to go into this.
Second.
Motion made seconded, all those in favor? I oppose. Alright, good night, everybody.